Okay. Call the work session to order. Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for obliging me again in an overall work session to discuss the water treatment plant, the design process, and what we're proposing to go out and build here. I guess the intent, again, is to answer any questions that councilors and mayor, our public may have in regards to the design process, where we've been. We want to give you as much information as you can for the decision. It's a big project, probably the biggest public project we'll take on in our careers. And bottom line, we want to make sure it's right so that going forward, we're not doing this again for a long, long, long time. And we've got a mechanism to pay for it in the future. So that's the goal of today's work session. At the end of the work session, I guess we go into regular session. Barring any unforeseen circumstances, we'd probably make a recommendation at that point to award the contract to Corolla Engineering. But going through the background, we started this process back in August with Corolla Engineering. We had a council consensus to go forward and negotiate a contract with Corolla. We did that. We've been negotiating. We've been working back and forth to come up with the best plan to fit within the capital that we have, and I believe we've done that. We did an initial proposal in October. I think staff sat back and went, wow, that's a lot of money. We determined that there was too many unknowns, and from there, what we did was a small contract with Corolla. That small contract basically laid out what our demand projections are going to be, so we solidified that. We looked at the subsurface conditions, basically determining what the geotech report was going to be. Was it major excavations or are we within the ballpark of normal building? Which that did come back favorable. We did a conceptual plant layout with our architect, basically sized the building, the components that go in it. We did building types, you know, whether we do an engineered or prefabbed. And then we also updated the cost estimate, the overall construction cost estimate. And that was the initial contract. And that's how we've gotten to where we're at today with the proposal, the cost estimate that's in front of you. Basically, that's what led to that. In small terms, it probably cut four to five million off the estimated construction contract price, and it cut probably, I think somewhere around $450,000 to $500,000 out of the design price by doing that initial contract to remove some of the unknowns. So that's where we're at today. So moving forward with the proposal, we've got the final proposal in front of you, and we've gone through this in detail. We're proposing to construct a microfiltration plant. Several reasons we're proposing microfiltration. It's a little more robust than a conventional plant. It will handle water turbidities a little easier than a conventional plant will. It's rapidly expandable. We can go in and expand this plant very rapidly. We've got a little more redundancy than a conventional plant, and it's also a little bit easier to operate. So those were the reasons, basically, for selecting a microfiltration plant. And if we move on, the capacity of the plant, or the conceptual plant layout, basically, this is what we're looking at. This is what we did with the architect and Corolla. Kind of came up with a conceptual idea of what that building would look like. And I want to use the term conceptual because we're still looking at ways that we can cut costs, and this may not be the most cost-effective way, but we need to dig into that a little bit more. So it may look different than this, but at least it gives us a ballpark and a square footage to work with from there. And where we go from there, we'll see. But that's kind of the initial process there. And then this looks at the inside of the plant and basically tells you what the process layout looks like, where the filter skids are, where your chemicals are stored, and so on. It's just another piece of the puzzle that we've put together in this initial contract phase. So the capacity, the capacity of the plant. Initially, staff had looked at eight million gallons as an initial capacity, and the more that we thought through that, and even looking at some of the proposals that we got during the RFP process, it was determined that eight's probably way too much right now. We need to look at something that's a little more efficient to run and meet our everyday demands, plus have a little bit of buffer, and also be able to rapidly expand. And I think that's what we've got here. Our initial capacity will be four and a half million gallons. We will have the ability, and you can see in this next slide and your slides, to move to six million gallons. And this is what ours would look like. Basically, we're going to have the filters, and then we'll have the ability to add additional filters to these racks, which in turn increases your capacity, up to six million gallons in the initial phase of the treatment plant. This building will accommodate eight million gallons, not without installing another skid and with some additional pumping and chemical feed pumps and minor issues like that. But to start with, we will have the ability to go to six million gallons without any major capital expense.
Ron, can I ask you a question real quick? And maybe you've covered this before, and I can't remember, but those filters, are they limited life?
Yes.
I mean, so how much is the maintenance cost going to a filtration system? How often are we changing a filter?
So you're looking at probably, on average, from what we understand, is about 10 years.
Oh.
So you get a 10-year lifecycle on these things.
Okay.
So, and that's been in that budget process that we've gone through internally. We've factored that replacement cost into our O&amp;M cost, and that will be factored in there.
The 10-year, 10 years from initial opening?
Yes. So we will be putting money aside every year to make that capital investment, whether it's a million dollars or a million two each year as we're moving forward. That money will be set aside to purchase that, so that we're not coming to you in 10 years and going, well, we need X percentage rate increase so that we can cover filter replacements.
Right. That would upset people tremendously.
Yes, it would. Yes, it would.
Ron, I guess to tag on to that, it's my understanding that those filters are repairable. They don't have to be replaced in entirety?
No. What you've got, you get about a 10-year lifecycle on them. You can pin them if they start to fail, but what happens is they start to lose their efficiency. So you may only get, say you start getting maybe 30%, what it does is it reduces your capacity in your plant. So you have to make sure that you've accounted for that as you're going through.
Thank you.
Is that the same kind of system Albany went to, do you remember?
Yes. It is, but it isn't. Albany uses a vacuum system, which they're sucking water through the filters, while we're pushing water through the filters.
Albany sucks.
So there are two different types of -- I did not say that.
That's what I heard.
I did not say that. So anyway, that's kind of the system that we're putting together. The intake, basically, we're working with Albany right now to come up with a new agreement on the canal, and that's something that we'll probably have an additional work session, joint council session on sometime later this spring, to discuss the new agreement on the canal. It's staff's opinion that we probably do owe something on a yearly basis to Albany for the maintenance that they do. Also, we're drawing our water off of there. They have expenses, so we're looking at that right now. Will be more information on that as we continue to work through the agreement process. With this project, we're going to have, with this overall project, we're going to have probably three to four different construction projects that come out of this, be a waterline project, which will connect the treatment plant to our system, sewer project so that we can take offsite sewage and some backwash water to our sewer treatment plant, site work, basically the water treatment plant itself with all the site work will be done under one general contract. It'll be a big one. And then there'll also be membrane procurement, where we put out an RFP to have different membrane suppliers propose on our plant and supplying the membranes to our plant. And they have to meet a certain amount of regulations. They've also got to meet the requirements that we've set forth in specs. And then they'll also, cost will be factored into that. And then at the end of that, once one is selected, they'll do a three-month test period where we actually get to see if what they're saying is what they can provide. So that's a benefit to us. It's a good insurance policy to do that. Moving on, basically, the design costs, which are in front of you, we've discussed that. This is a not-to-exceed contract. Corolla has spent hours and hours putting it together, along with our staff. We've gone through it. We feel comfortable with what they've done. Anything above and beyond this would need to come back to this body for approval. We don't feel that there's any reason for that. I mean, there shouldn't be any reason for additional, but you never know. You know, something out of the ordinary could pop up, but we think we've covered our bases here with this. We're relying on Corolla. They've done lots of these, and we trust what they've put together. The project, basically, their design cost, and that includes everything. That's the entire design of this project, $1.9 million. With that, we get all of the utilities. We get the whole works. Staff has done some comparables with different plants, and typically, if you were looking at it in terms of percentage, 12% to 14% isn't about right for design. We're sitting right at 13%. So I feel comfortable with the number that we have here for what we're getting. And you can see up there what we've added. We've added the design cost to that. We've added the construction engineering. That number is not from Corolla. The first two are. The second two subtotals are from staff, and the million dollars for construction engineering, we made an estimate. We did that for budgeting purposes, and then we also did the contingencies, about 10% right now. So those two numbers came from our staff. So you get an overall project cost of about $19 million. And that gets us operational, and the one thing it does not do is cover demolition or decommission of the existing water treatment plant. We're going to have to address that issue at some point, but I think as we had our individual meetings, we discussed the fact that we can do a lot of that internally. We'll have to have a plan developed, and council will need to decide what we want to do with that property as a whole before we go tearing things down and making a mess out there. But there's a lot of options there to do that. You know, we can decommission the pumps, and I imagine there's some stuff in there that we could probably auction as well, too. I think. Some of it may be antique-ish, but there's some stuff in there we could probably auction off.
Is there a particular timeframe that we have to do that in?
No, there's not. Basically, this plant, our existing plant, once we turn the switch on the new plant, we'll want to maintain operational status with that existing plant for probably six to eight months, until we're comfortable that the new plant's going to do everything we want it to do. And not that we have any inclining to believe that it wouldn't. It's just that startup issues, it could be anything. And, you know, if it can go wrong, it will go wrong. And that's not necessarily anybody's fault. It's just that sometimes things happen. So we want to make sure that we still have the ability to provide water to the city while we're getting that operational and making sure it's operational. We've got lots of time to think about that and how we want to do that. Let's see. Moving forward, so that's that. And then we went into proposed city funding. And this is myself and Jason and Rob sat down and basically, based on the financials where we're at right now, today, with the water fund, and looked at this and said, all right, what's it going to take to get there in order to maintain a capital fund going forward? Our assumption is, based on the numbers that we're seeing, we're going to need about 8% over the next two years. Now, that's essentially 2% over the CPI over the next two years is what we're looking at. Whether we get there in an increment of 5% next year and 3% the following, or whether we do 4% and 4%, it really has no bearing on the cash flow. This is so that at the end of this, the water fund itself is left whole, and we're not taking all the rates that we've raised right now and turn them into debt service and have no ability to come back and do any line replacements. So that gets us to that point. We're looking at probably a $13 million to $14 million bond. I've planned for the worst and said 13.8. We've assumed a bond interest rate based on a couple of people that Dean's contacted of a little less than 4.25, but we use 4.25 for ours. We set a contribution of 1.5 million from the Northwest URD, which the cash is there in order to do that. Sanitary sewer pays for the sewer line replacement, you know, and then what we're proposing to do is take the cash over the next, basically what's left from this year, and then over the next two years, and devote that to the project. Other than maybe like Cascade Drive and a couple of really minor repair items, we'd take all that capital and go there.
What's the timeline for the bond?
The bond? So if I, and I'm going with what we've kind of got in our heads, we'd probably shoot for April 15, May 15 to bid the project. So the idea would be to have enough cash on hand to pay your first few months of construction costs, so that you could sell the bond for exactly what you needed to sell the bond for. So the bond sale would happen at probably somewhere around August of 15, because it's usually a 12-month period before --
Of 15.
August of 15.
Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest rate volatility possible between now and then.
Yes. And we've looked at that and ran several different scenarios, so, yeah, that's the hard part.
Nothing you can do about that.
I mean, if we thought we could sell it now, but usually the requirements with the bonds are that you spend up to, I want to say 70% within the first 18 months, most of them. So I don't think we could get there by selling it now. We could cover the debt service right now, but I don't think we could meet the bond requirements. That's a good question. I could ask Dean if that's a possibility.
We really have been saying that for years. I mean, oh, the interest rates are on the verge of, you know, ticking up.
I know, and then there's risk in that.
And they just keep dragging on, but, you know, when you're talking millions, that's a big deal.
It substantially changes, 1%, I believe, changed our debt service payment by almost $100,000 a year.
Sure.
So it's huge. It's a huge --
But there's only so much you can do.
That's why we've got it listed out here. So let me do some more work with Dean on that, but we're a little hesitant to sell the bond now until we actually see what the construction costs come back, because we don't want to end up selling it for more or less, and you just, it's kind of a, we're kind of caught in no man's land until we get a contractor on board. But the cash would be dedicated and used towards the treatment plant. I mean, like I said, there's a few projects that, you know, we're going to have to put cash to over the course of the next two years, but any major capital lines, I think, I can only think of one, and that would probably be Cascade Drive, and then short of that, it'd be just other minor repairs and stuff like that, until we can, until we're able to get the debt service covered and then basically move forward. We don't want to use that cash now because it just increases our bond cost. So basically, if you look at how that's played out up there, based on our numbers, we come up with about $19.2 million. We can cover the debt service with what we have based on those rates, essentially moving this thing forward without too much headache. And then the next sheets that I've got in your packet are --
Hey, Ron, could you go back just a second on the, funny. You and I talked, and I just wanted to explain this for the public and for the council. Originally, a lot of people thought that the money on the increases were going into this pot, and this pot was going to pay for the water treatment plant, whereas it went in for infrastructure and it was helping us to get a better bond. And when I was talking to you, I believe that this money, these increases, are going to go into a pot of money that goes towards the plant. Is that correct?
Yes. So if we took over the last, we've done three 15% rate increases towards this project. Basically, that, if you take a baseline of where we were before we started, the rate increase is an increased inflation by a certain percentage of, you know, staff costs, which, that, materials and services, basically, that increase is cash that we accumulate every year. We've used that on the Fifth Street Reservoir Waterline Project. We've used it on the North Williams Industrial Way Project, and it seems like maybe a couple other smaller waterline projects. So those increases, so they generate cash. Knowing full well, at the end of the day, the cash was going to be, once we got to the point where we had generated enough cash, above and beyond what it takes to operate the utility, we would use that to pay the debt service. So that's what that's been used for. What we're proposing now is to kind of hold back on any of the major line replacements that we know we need to do over the next couple of years, so that we can carry that cash with us. And yes, these rate increases that we'd be looking at, the three and the five, they would hold over into that pot of money. You know, so, and the budget committee's going to see probably not so much this year, but the next year, we'll have about $3 million sitting there, is what we're projecting. So it's a big pot of money. We want to protect it and use it towards that. So that's kind of how we've laid that out. So that cash increase, yes, has gone, the rates were increased to cover the debt service of this project. Now, in the meantime, cash was generated, and we used that cash to fund some larger projects that were needed along with the treatment plant. And I guess that's the way to look at it in a holistic view. These other projects, these other line replacements that we did, they were necessary in order to provide pressures and get flows to these areas that didn't currently have it in order to build the water plant where we're building now. So it's all essentially part of the same project. We kind of look at the water treatment plant and the system, we kind of look at it as one, because it really is. With one little break in the system, pressure's lost. I mean, it's all kind of tied together. So does that answer that?
Thank you, yes.
You bet. So you see where we're at with Water Utility Fund? This is kind of the same thing that we would do in State of the Utilities that we would typically do. Basically, shows what the percentages are, where they go over the next couple of years. You've got the 13, 14 budget, and we summarized a lot of this. And then you show the next one with a 5% increase, capital increases. And then the final one, you can start to see where debt service increases, and that'd be your first interest payment. And then the following year, this green chart where it shows capital improvement program would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000. And that's kind of how your water fund would look going forward. The one thing we've tried to do with this is not be shortsighted with it. We want to make sure that when we're done with this project, we can still maintain the system. And right now, we've got, and this isn't just, wouldn't it be great if we could replace all these lines? We've looked at about $6 million worth of line replacement that needs to be done within the next 10 years, whether it be leaks, whether it be undersized pipes, and that doesn't count all the aged pipes that we have. But in terms of the whole right and reality concept, there's the right thing to do, and the reality is, this is what we can afford to do. So that's kind of the direction that we've taken, is make sure we've got some money to push forward on those projects.
What is the contingency slice of the pie?
Contingency? That gets factored in every year. I suppose you could look at it in the sense, I look at it in two ways. If you ever had a major issue with your water treatment plant, you'd pull money from there to go deal with it, unbudgeted type items. The other thing, I guess, the way I probably look at it, is I think we're doing pretty good when we project revenues to within 4% to 5%. It varies from year to year. I mean, you can go back and look at our trend lines, you know, some years we hit it right on, and then the next year, you go, okay, well, it should be here, and that's without any rate increases, and you're 4% or 5% short, or you're 4% or 5% over, and you're going, well, what happened? What happened?
So does that carry over to the next year if it's not used?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't get spent, you know, and it doesn't get --
It's not planned for, period.
Nope, it's not planned for. And what it does, when you do a revenue expenditure budget, basically, I've accounted for $167,000 worth of expenditure and revenue that may or may not happen. So you're not, you're not taking that budget, I guess the best way to explain it, you're not taking that budget right up to the very limit, you know? I mean, you're in the red line all the time with it. I mean, you want to, you want to basically give yourself some flexibility, because we can't, I'm going to be honest with you, can't project.
I totally understand that, and I think it's wise. I just, you know, if it's coming down to the end of the fiscal year, and there's a project we really should do, and there's still money in the contingency, do you say, okay, you know what, let's just go ahead and get that project done and take it from contingency?
Typically, we would look at that and look at capital first. If we had money and capital, we'd do it out of capital. Obviously, we'd have to come back to the council and ask for approval to do that. But in most cases, we don't know what that final contingency number, that final revenue, incoming revenue, is going to be until end of June. So if I'm in May and go, well, I think I've got $167,000 in contingency, I may or may not, it may rain all of June, and we may not use any water. So we're pretty cautious with that. I think it's kind of a, I call it conservatism, you know? We try and get as close as we can with projecting the revenue. Rob and I have got sheets and trends and stuff that we've looked at for, gosh, over the last few years, and I wish I could say there was a science to it, but I think it's more of a flip of the coin, and that sounds about right. So we try and be pretty conservative in that, so that we don't overshoot our budgets. But it does carry forward, just so you know. I mean, none of this money is, I don't look at it as a use or lose. It's either needed or not, and it carries forward. Moving on, schedule. As we talked about, we probably see some construction projects happen out there this year onsite. We would like to probably do the waterline, the connecting waterline, most likely the sewer line, possibly some onsite utilities, and that is all part of this overall project, the $19 million. How we break it out, we'll break it out, a lot of what we'll look at is pieces of the puzzle, you know, like, don't want to give your building contractors a bunch of utility work in their project, so we're going to break out the utilities, get our local contractors involved in this process, so they can at least get an opportunity to bid this stuff as well. So that'll be coming this summer. We'll budget through the budget committee for that stuff, and you'll see the projects listed out there. And then we'll also start the membrane procurement this year, where we do the RFP for the membranes, and the different suppliers will come in, and they'll put on a dog and pony show for us, I guess is the best way to say it, and we'll have to meet a bunch of requirements, and give us a cost of what it's going to be, and we'll take into account the overall costs and the long-term costs, you know, what, you know, life cycles on it. There'll be a whole bunch of stuff that we look at, and then we'll come to this body and recommend a membrane supplier to go with, whether it be Pall, Xenon, there's a bunch of them out there. But we'll try and pick the best one for that. And then, like I said, looking at sometime in May, April of 15 to start the overall project. So that's kind of where we're at. And I think in a nutshell, that pretty much sums up where we're at. What other questions can I answer?
I think I've asked enough.
Well, again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I know that I've used up a lot of it over this week and the last week, but I appreciate your time. It's been beneficial for me to hopefully at least, we want you to know what we know, so that you're comfortable in making the decision.
And we're done with you for a while.
Thank you.
Right? I thought it was a question.
I'd be okay with that.
We really appreciate staff's time and energy that you diligently put into this project.
Yes. We've spent a lot, but I got to tell you, it's been fun. It's been a lot of fun. Mike and Jason and Rob and I have put in a lot of long hours, but it's been exciting and something new. It's once in a career that you get to do something like this, so it's been fun. We've enjoyed it.
50 years, now you can do it again.
I hope I'm retired. I do. Either retired or dead, one of the two.
Yeah, I echo that, too. Thank you for your work and the briefing that we had, where we were able to kind of go over the documents, and appreciate that. It's a lot of work.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. With that, I guess we'll move into -- With that, I guess we'll move into, well, adjourn the work session and call the meeting to order, and we'll have the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little of the clerk call roll, please.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Grizzle?
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
And Counselor Bowen and Scott are absent this, today.
Thank you. Consent calendar, the agenda for today. Any corrections or additions?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent calendar passes. And at this time, we have an opportunity for public comments. And the City Council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute any written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to the regular session. Number one, approval to award the design contract for the water treatment plant, presented by Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It's just that, basically, everything that we've covered, we're proposing to enter into a contract with Corolla Engineering for the $1.9 million, our ballpark there. I can answer any questions that you might have. If not, staff is recommending that we award the contract.
You answered all my questions the other day when we met, so...
Good.
I think that was a very good way to do it, too.
I appreciate that.
He talked about the difference between these two numbers.
Yeah, it helped us take care of the minutia before we actually looked at it. That did help a lot. Any other questions, or Ron?
Yeah, in our one-on-one sessions?
Yes, sir.
The, maybe I just misunderstood or had my wishful hat on, that that $1.9 number possibly was going to come down?
It could, yeah. I mean, there's no guarantee. Basically, this is a not-to-exceed. I think there's things in there that, I mean, we've already talked as a group collectively with Corolla. There's some things that our staff is intending to take on, which would in turn reduce hours that Corolla staff works on that, which in turn reduces the hours that they bill us. So yes, I think some of that could come down, potentially. I'm hesitant to attach a number to that, because I'm not sure really where it would land. But essentially, what we have before us is the $1.9 million, or 1.903, 904...
I think when I left the meeting, I was under the impression that we might see a lower number for today's consideration, but...
Yeah, no. Basically, I think from an internal point, we're looking at ways that we can cut that down. We still haven't decided if we're going to have staff time to do that. There's some issues there with staff time to do that with the other projects that we've got going on. I mean, I know there's some that we will take on, which will in turn reduce that point.
How many hours a week can you work? I mean, really?
Well, since I'm salaried, quite a few.
The Corolla part of it is the 1.2.
Yes.
And then the other local contractors make up the difference that we're anticipating to get to the 1.9. But that is not to exceed on all counts.
Not to exceed on all counts, yes.
And those parts that you were talking about, possibly trimming back, that was like when we would be doing certain aspects of the construction or different things?
Actually, pieces of design. I think with the utility contracts, it's pretty probable for our staff to write the specs and do the contract documents and take care of all the bidding requirements and all that stuff. So if you go back through here and look at that, there's quite a bit of savings in that. It equates on down the line. Corolla doesn't have to sub-consume, manage their sub-consults. And I think that's where we're looking at it internally. I hesitate to put a number to it, because, you know, at this point, it's really hard to say what we can and can't do until we actually get there. But I guess the best way to put it is know that staff, we're always looking at ways that we can cover it. And I know Mike, who's sitting here today. He's the project manager, and I'm not sure if many of you have met Mike Tripit. He's the guy that'll be doing a lot of the day-to-day construction. In fact, he's the guy that'll be doing all the day-to-day construction inspection, the more that I think about that. So he's always looking for ways to cut out costs and whatnot, too. So, you know, to give you a number, I don't have a number.
Might be able to cut this Udell number a little bit.
And that's one place we could cut.
Just look into that.
Yeah, okay, I'll take a look at it.
Did you hear that, Mike?
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ron.
You bet.
Okay. Do I entertain a motion for approval of the design contract?
So move.
It's been moved and seconded to award the design contract for the water treatment plant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work. Even Brian.
Not to exceed, buddy boo.
Any items from council?
I'd like to take a battle out of the little work. I do love it. Quick one, mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. I don't know whether it was the thrill of the moment or my own nervousness, but I want to say thank you very much for appointing me as the interim position. I do appreciate your confidence, and what's made my job so much easier so far is the support of staff. And especially like to thank the department managers for working together, and I think there's a very good team out there. And whoever comes on board, whatever decision is made, the new manager will have a very lucky group of people to work with. No, let me reverse that. He would be very fortunate, or he or she would be very fortunate to work with this group. There we go.
After our meeting, I had a chance to meet with the staff and Walt, and I was just, I've always been impressed with the staff, but it was really impressive. Good group. I got to sit through a staff meeting, and I had done that before, so that was really neat. And just the way that they work together and the camaraderie that they have, very impressed. And Walt, I appreciate your help. Anything else? Have the City Council meeting scheduled for Friday for the interviews, and there is a little bit of a change, and I did email you on that, but I just wanted to update you, that we'll go into a public session right after our individual meetings, have the public session, and then we'll break into an executive session later as we're discussing any details of the contracts, and so that's an executive session issue. But looking forward to it. I've spoken to Gary a couple times, and also spoke to Greg Prothman today, and he gave me some more details on Gary Marks and what he would be interested in receiving, and so, as far as an offer, if we did kind of an offer, so. So I've got some of that information, too, for Friday. Did you have any questions on Fridays? Okay. And that was all I had. Anything else? Any other councilors?
And that is here?
Yes, that'll be here. Yes, in here. And Linda will be here to direct people and kind of help out, too, during the day. In this end room here, yeah.
Linda gets to be here the whole time.
What's that?
Linda gets to be here the whole time.
She does.
There's so much.
She'll be multitasking. We can do that. Citizen comments? There's another opportunity from anybody from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will adjourn the meeting.